Start every meeting like this, gentlemen, in case you're wondering.
That's true.
Not just you, but we all deserve it, that's true. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting. This is Monday, August the 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call role, please?
Yes, I see Brown.
Here.
Ralph Baker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Robert Rainwater.
Here.
State Tenford's accent, and Rob Powell's accent.
Thank you very much. If anyone would please stand, we'll begin our readings tonight with a prayer led by one of them, Chief Brad Hobbs, and pledge, followed by Chief Brian, Mr. Derry. Mr. Derry, Brian.
Father, we just praise your name. We thank you for many blessings on our community. We pray for our citizens. And Father, tonight, I take the prayer for the mayor, give him the wisdom, the guidance, the heads of protection over him, and let him lead our town. The way you seek the Father, we pray for our council members, our city attorney, Treasury clerk, and Father, we just ask you, watch over them, bless them, and guide them. And this, thank you, ask you, and thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may we see it? At this time, I would ask the council to entertain approving the minutes for the July 7th, 2025 regular council meeting. Motion to approve the end writ.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Recognizations and acknowledgements. I want to just comment that schools, as a reminder, school starts here in town on the 11th. And just as a reminder, also for sure, to watch out for students. That's our precious future, walking to school, crossing streets. And please, please be aware of that and take note. One quick note on another issue or event coming up. The, our annual AML Arkansas Municipal League Planning meeting will be here in Greenwood the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, at Bell Park. All the meetings will be there. We're going to try to treat those folks like they're royalty. So let's be on our best behavior, Danielle. Anyway, so they're coming for those, probably going to be around 60 people, mayors and their spouses, and councilmen, and Treasury clerk.
Treasury clerk.
Treasury clerk. Those folks are going to be in our town, and we're going to try to treat them nice and show them the town. Visit with Coach Young, we're going to take them to the GMAT. He's going to speak to them. They get to see about 10 minutes of some practice. We will be confiscating everyone's phone because they cannot do all those practices and take it back to their towns. That's a little joke, but it's true. Take them to the historical district. Cody Faber, the care keeper, will supply information over there. So hopefully, have a good time with those folks and show them, treat them well. One more thing I want to do at this point, and if I could get our own Chief Hobbs to come up front with me.
Brad, he needs to be quick in his ear.
So Brad, Chief, I'm sorry if you'll stand here. I don't get to tell you what to do very often, especially with your arm. So, I don't, real quick, he is not retiring from the city of Greenwood. Let's make perfectly clear, right? You're 50, 60 years away from doing that. But what he has done this past weekend, I think officially, is retired from the military after 21 years of service. So we want to recognize him tonight. He did not invite us to his ceremony at the base because he didn't want us there. You know, he's kind of the shy guy a little bit and doesn't like a lot of attention. I'll probably get in trouble for this, but can't spend that kind of time in the military and not be recognized. You are, I could, I could talk enough to cry here, but I'm trying not to. But you are such an asset to this city, which you became chief here. It's just wonderful. And I mean that, I don't mean that flippantly. It's amazing. All the department heads know it. Your department knows that everything works well. It's like a well-oiled machine, and I appreciate that very much from the bottom of my heart. So you've done an amazing job, of course. You're not leaving, but this is a proclamation on behalf of the people of Greenwood, the city of Greenwood, to publicly recognize Senior Master Sergeant Bradley Hobbs. Whereas, Senior Master Sergeant Bradley Hobbs has served this nation with distinction and dedication in the United States Air Force and Arkansas Air National Guard from June 20, or 2004 to August 2024, 25, I'm sorry. Culminating in over 21 years of honorable military service. And whereas, in addition to his military service, and since 2005, Brad Hobbs has proudly served the city of Greenwood as a police officer, rising through the ranks, protecting and serving this community with the same selflessness and honor that has defined his military career. And whereas, Senior Master Sergeant Hobbs played a pivotal role in numerous statewide missions, including leading efforts during the largest domestic operations in Arkansas history, the civil unrest response of 2020, exemplifying his steadfast leadership and commitment to the safety and well-being of our Kansasans. And whereas, Chief Hobbs, as we so affectionately call him, has answered the call of duty both at home and abroad, deploying in support of operations Noble Eagle, Inherent Resolve, and Enduring Freedom, serving with courage, professionalism, and integrity in defense of our nation's security and values. And now, therefore, I, Doug Kinsel, mayor of the great city of Greenwood, Arkansas, to hereby proclaim Monday, August the 4th, 2025, to be Senior Master Sergeant Hobbs' day. Now you can applaud. This is a day to recognize the extraordinary man on the occasion of his retirement from the United States Air Force and Arkansas Air National Guard. We honor him, his unwavering service to our nation, to our state, and to our town, and we celebrate the remarkable legacy he continues to leave, given under my hand on this day, along with the signature of our Treasury. Charlotte, there. There's your proclamation, sir. That and 50 cents, a dollar and a half, and we'll get you a cup of coffee. This is something that I give out to all people that we give proclamations to. It's the key to the city, and I have the same little jokes that I have with every one of them. It's a small key because we're rather small in stature here in Greenwood. We have small town. So there's your key to the city. You already have a key to every building in the world here, so that's really only, it's from the hearts of over 10,000 people. And I mean that seriously, seriously. I got a, I got a pen because I know you don't have one. It's a Lethal pen. Say the same thing again, yeah, I mean it. Greenwood's motto, logo is feels like home. It could not feel like home without Brad Hobbs. And I mean that so many ways. And one more thing I used to do. Are you nervous?
I'm not, I'm gonna cry.
One thing I used to do, and I used to get in trouble for it, is, this is kind of odd for me to tell the chief, but you can now drive around for the rest till midnight tonight as fast as you want to in Greenwood, Arkansas, and nobody's going to bother you.
He doesn't have.
I know he doesn't. So do exactly what you've been doing since you became chief or police officer. I love you, man, and I appreciate you. You don't, you don't get how much I love you and how much I appreciate what you do for the city and for our country. So thank you very much. Is he smiling? He never smiles.
No, he's getting it normal, thanks.
Brad?
Thank you, Brad.
I won't be able to talk because that's the line.
Speech?
No.
Okay. Best thing I've done, long time, long time. Committee reports. I've looked through, there's, I think pretty much everybody submitted. Again, I say this all the time, if you don't see something you need to know, let me know, let Danielle know, I'm going to get it for you. I'm really, I talked to, just so you know, Lisa Moore with the center was going to try to come in here tonight. She still has, her husband is not doing well at all, and she had some health issues herself, so trying to get her some to do with everybody. Citizen form, I do have a gentleman who decided, did you want to, you want to speak? Yeah, you did.
I don't want to follow that.
Oh, well. Mr. Buddy Lloyd, if you'll come up and repeat your name and address, so we'll have it on record.
My name's Buddy Lloyd. I live at 305 Twisted Oak Place in East Phillips. It's not going to take a long time, I'm just going to give you an update on the investment that the city made in our Masonic block. The footings have been dug, concrete is poured, and we laid blocks today. So the scouts are going to be living there with us. You can't change the size of the garage door anymore because of the blocks are laid.
Whatever it is, that's great.
We're, we're looking forward to continuing, moving forward, and we hope you all look forward to seeing the beautiful building.
Thanks, sir. And right across the street from you is going to be, tell me what is called Academy, Fine Arts Academy, which Martin's been working on. So what a, what a great match, literally right across the street from each other. We're going to do a little informative video on it, I think next week, maybe this week, to get people on board or well aware of what's going on. So, yeah, we're excited about the whole lives there too, for sure. Since, I mean, financial report, are we ready, Mr. Tom?
We?
I'll be ready for you, is what I meant. Mr. Tom?
First of all, I want to point out the new artwork that you have up there, the new picture. It's a blast from the past, a little bit of nostalgia there. You can see some of the things that have changed in the city by knowing what's out there now. One of the things that's very apparent is the top of the hill, or it's not there, the clockwork. The other is, somebody pointed out, this tree is gone. Plus, there's no banners on our nice, nice broad iron fence here. And the other is the Three Rivers Title Company is still there, so that hasn't been renovated over here yet. And then, for those that don't really see it, along this walkway here and several others, it's the, the expanded Veterans Memorial Plaque. They're all down this way. A lot, a lot has changed in the city. All right, so what hasn't changed is our native growth pattern for the year. This is the cash basis, city sales and use taxes. How do I get that?
That's great.
So we're going to jump right into it. First, I want to point out that here at the top of July over the same period is up 1.91%. So on a cash basis, we actually bettered our previous month. This is a cumulative down here, but the previous month, of the previous July over this July is up 1.11%. So we're going in the right direction. It is slowly but surely starting to recover. So when it looks like, when you take that into consideration for the 2025 cumulative, we're going in the right direction as well. From the 10.33% through, from the March period cumulative, we're down to, we cut that in half to about 5.69%. So again, we're going in the right direction. However, when you look at whether we're going to meet budget, highly unlikely. The probability of us meeting the budget of a 3% growth, which is up here in the corner, that is less than 1%. We are currently averaging $290,000 a month over the first seven months. The probability for us, just the remaining months, meaning five months of 2024, generated an average of 318, but for us to make budget, we have to average 365,000, and that has not been achieved in the previous year at all. That would be a benchmark high for us. As far as the average distribution needed to have been a zero growth, there's a chance, there's a probability of about 20% or less. The average we would need is 343,000. We did achieve that one time, and that was November of '24, so it's probable. I mean, we could have that happen, but I still think we're going to be slightly less than a 0% growth for the city sales and use taxes. That's on a cash basis what we actually take in and it's distributed to us. So as far as the way the rest of the cities went, Marlin is the only one that showed a large on their end, a large negative impact on the sales and/or the distribution. They were down 21.11%. I did look at their rebates, and they did have a significant amount of rebates in during the July distribution period, which would have been made. As far as us and Fort Smith, we were running right about a 1% cash distribution, and we were positive as far as our sales, taxable sales is concerned, on a cash basis. In other words, our taxable sales are calculated based on how much money is brought, is distributed to us. We all know now that we have to add back the rebate and the audit numbers. So when you look at the rebates, we, just about what we normally have been over the last three years, '23, '24, and '25, the three years, we were at just under 5,000, so a little bit big peak. But I'm looking for a larger rebate amount for August and/or somewhere in this August to October period because of the June, or the fiscal year ends. So I'm anticipating that in August, we're going to have a larger number here, more in the lines of 24. So I would believe double digits coming, at least in August, September-ish. October, a little bit of an anomaly there, we'll see how that pans out. As far as the recalculate, I told Steve, who was asking about this at the last city council meeting, Mr. Edward asked about where we'd get this type of information, and I said I would restate the distributed, this is the cash basis distribution. July was 351, that calculates to that 1.11% that you just saw that's distributed to distributed. But when you add back the rebate and the audit adjustment, our growth for taxable sales restated for the actual spend, regardless of rebate, was up 1.01% or just at 1%. Still a growth, but now you see the impact of what the rebate does as far as taxable sales. So what that's basically saying is that it's giving you a kind of an indication as to how the sentiment of the purchasing power of the citizens is going within the city and their consumer confidence is concerned. So it's, it's growing. Rebates that are getting us as far as distribution is concerned. So if you look at the full distribution, which would be January through July, the city is adjusting for rebate and audit. The city is down 1.84% as far as taxable sales is concerned. So it isn't, it is negative, but it's trending positive. If you recall, last month, it was 2.29%, so we're actually gaining ground. As to whether we'll be flat for the year, that's still to be seen because we still have five months to go, and more rebates. So the taxable sales trend adjusted for the rebate is sort of negative, a little bit negative, 1.84% right there, but that's the actual way that the, the amount of taxable sales has been calculated from November 24 to May 25. That's when the sales occur. This is actually January through July, if you look at distribution. The six-month taxable sales trend, 24 over 25, recalculated, as I just showed you, you're looking at, this is positive for us, the fact that the 2025 numbers are above the 2024 numbers now for the second time in the year against '24. '24 had a little bit more robust period between the December through April months, January or November to May, we actually had. And as far as the county sales tax is concerned, again, that was positive as well, 0.53%, a half percent up for the same July over the same period, 0.4. And as far as the cumulative is concerned, we kind of rebounded a little bit because of that to 1.39% down for the year. As far as the probability of us achieving a zero growth, which is what we budgeted, which would be hitting that $2.6 million mark, we would have, our current average is 214,000, we would have to collect 221,000. That did happen once in August. As far as that is concerned, that's still about a 20% probability that we would hit the zero growth and carry on side to, that funds operations, by the way. And as far as taxable sales, this is how it was distributed. That's our amount, 7.45%. So we had a $221,000 distribution, and the impact of the county was $1,178. So this is like an EKG of how the sales tax is going for the Sebastian County taxable sales. Kind of goes down, up, down, up, down. So following that logic, you would expect next month to be a little bit lower if that's how it's going to continue to go. And you see that it's actually $28 million down for the year. If you add all these numbers, this is against '24's numbers. It's $28 million short of last year. As far as the combined is concerned, again, it's tracking in the positive direction too. That's the city and the county added together and what we budgeted versus, this is the distribution, so we're down 3.91% in total for both county and city sales tax, based on previous year. Now we get to the fun part, and this is the advertising and promotion. And there is an advertising and promotion meeting tomorrow, just so you know. I wanted to show you the numbers. January through July, these are the number from '25 against '24's decreases for each of the months. We were down 6.06% from the previous July. Notice July's numbers are actually lower than June's for the most part historically. So you see that 6.06%, so cumulatively, we haven't had a positive gain all year long. And that 11.49% does not take into consideration the budget, which is 4% increase. So that's a 15 and a half percent decline in the amount of money that would have been collected against budget, and 11 or 11 and a half percent from what you anticipated getting in, you cannot distribute because you don't have that money. That comes from prepared fees, the sales. There's your trend line for, it's pretty much flat for this year. And then I want to do something, I want to show you, there's July's totals. This is the drop that we've been seeing historically so far for each of the months for this year, and it's more tallied this way, AMP year-to-date. This is seven months for 2018, 1920, all the way till 2025. So for the seven-month period, this is where we are, and it is trending downward. So as it trends downward, it pulls that trend line for those 18 to 25 years down. So here's the five-year trend for AMV tax. Looks good, I mean, you look at it just this, but that's a little bit of a misnomer. And I'm going to tell you why. Because of what I just told you, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 of the last eight months are below the trend line, which pulls that trend line down. So the more it's negative, the less likely the five-year trend is going to remain positive. So I'm going to break that down by year. Here's 2022 and 2023's actual trend for the year, from January through December, flat. That came off of the COVID years, too. This is the 2023 negative. Now, this is the average AMV tax trend. This is the, AMC is the average monthly collection, the 16.8 in '22, the 17.853 in '23. It goes up, but so does inflation, because you know, we've got a lot of coal over there, too. So in the taxes based on the sale of the price. '24, 18.9 was the actual monthly collection, but you still notice it went trending downward. And in 2025, 17,000 is the average monthly collection. What I want to show you is the top range here for 2025 is 19,000. It's '24, the top number in '24 was 24,000. You pretty much hovered around 20,000 right in here, but we're not really, it hasn't hit 20,000 all year in the collection of AMV. So I'm going to trend it a little differently. This is the '21, '23 years. That was the year when it was trending more positive. But now in '24 and '25, it's trending much more negative. And we'll talk more about that tomorrow. The cash flow, 17 million is what we started the year. We were, year-to-date, decreasing cash at 534,000, still over 16 million. This is supposed to be significantly lower based on budget. So the fact that we have decreased at 3.14% based on what we mostly do to this number down here in capital, we haven't spent nearly what the budget dictated we would be spending and would probably have to go borrow for, as far as bonds are concerned, for the water sewer department. That's the most of that impact right here. Because in the capital expenditures, the city as a whole, this is city all-in, has spent 15.72% in seven months, of the 15 million five that we have in capital. So I'm going to break that down a little bit different. I'm going to extract water sewer because they are a large player in the capital expense improvement. So we had a 15.72, as I just showed you, all-in city. So if you move water to sewer, they have right now a 6.44% spend on capital of the 10.08. But if you extract that number from the rest of it, in other words, we subtract it from the year-to-date, this would be the capital of the city excluding water sewer, spent so far 1.745 million on a budget of 4.6 million, or 37.334%. So now you see where the low 15% number comes from. And that's pretty much all.
Any questions available?
All right, Tom, thank you. A little sliver of hope there. I think we, Detective Silverline, keep looking for that to turn it up. Thank you, sir. Next, we have agenda additions. We actually, we have one for sure. Let's look to Chief, or did we already? So number 10, if council would allow, oh, thank you. If council would allow, number 10 will be street resolution to mend budget for Fox Run change order. And then number 11, fire resolution to mend budget for monitor. Council is good with that? Okay. I'm never good, but, yeah. Okay, so moving on to hold unfinished business, not again asking for a vote tonight. I like the fact that it's on the agenda just to keep everybody aware of it. I kind of debated whether to have Danielle do her little report, but I think I'm going to ask her to, if she doesn't mind, about what she's been doing with code enforcement lately. You can do it from where you are, unless you want to come to the microphone. Just a brief, some of those letters, that's what's in. You like surprises?
No one else has given a roll before, have they? You're special.
She is special.
What would you like to add?
What you've been doing from code?
Oh, on top of my other two jobs? You push the button on there, I'll think it's asleep. No, I think it's working. Or you're going to hit this? There's a button.
Push the button on the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, okay.
Your first comment wasn't recorded this morning.
As I currently serve as the mayor's assistant and HR director, and also assisting with his new role as municipal president, I have been working code enforcement since end of April, since we've not had anyone in that position, in my downtime, which is not much. But since end of April, I have sent out over 130 letters, and all I'm able to really try to monitor is overgrown grass and trash debris and cars. Doing the best I can, I've taken numerous, numerous dozens and dozens of calls from presidents complaining about yards. I've been advised to have them contact you all, since, since it's not been approved to hire for that position. It could be, be done better, but again, I don't have time as I am, I have a full plate already. And I'm not being, paid for that.
Thank you. So the reason I wanted to give you a report is just to tell you what's on her plate for your consideration, hopefully, at the budget, next budget time, we can look at this. I wouldn't call it living along because she's done a great job with the letters, but again, these are only letters regarding grass. We don't, we're not out there in the field physically, can be, or she can for sure, although she does take a trip every so often in the city car and take a look, and Aaron's actually helped with that a little bit, I think, too.
She has, she is down going back to Park Island, I was going to tell that.
So just be aware, in my opinion, humble opinion, for what's worth, that is a very much needed position here at City Hall. So we could, and code enforcement, in my opinion, could help immensely with this AMV situation of being able to collect these taxes in a better, quicker manner than we have, than we are now. That's, that's a, we've not done that in the past, we didn't do a code before, but with a separate job all by itself, it would be very much a big part of that position. I know he probably doesn't want to do it for rest.
I know he probably doesn't want to do it for risk of getting stuck with it, but I'm assuming the chief of police is still with the water patrol in the streets. I'd just take a peek if you have to see one and chop the headrest down.
I don't know that he's asked, Chief, you can address that. I have not asked him to do that. I do the same thing when I'm out.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking anyone to do that, but I could be, I'm certain to do that.
Like I said, I'm not trying to stick you for the, for the, to partner with the job, just, I feel like you guys roam around the town more than anybody, I would hope, you know, patrol, keep the peace.
The issues of, in a letter is our first attempt of doing anything about any of this, whether it's a yard or a vehicle that's no longer running, that's on blocks, or hasn't moved in a year or six months or something like that. I just, in the future, hopefully in the very near future, we'll be looking at this a little seriously, more serious, and give somebody a uniform, possibly armed, that can go out and take care of all this force and handle all these things and put more on that person's plate. And again, I think AMP is a prime example where we could benefit from it. That's all I had it on there for, just to bring, if council would want to table it or postpone it, however you want to do this.
Do you want to talk about it at budget time?
Yeah, I definitely want to talk about it at budget. I don't necessarily need it every month.
How many motions have been brought up at budget time?
Okay, first, okay. Sound, got a question.
That doesn't mean a vote, does it? Just don't take the action on this. Sorry.
Okay, cool. All right, moving on, new business, City Clerk Treasury, Treasury. It's going to be all.
No, Treasury, Treasury clerk.
Resolution seven, speaking to City IT Committee.
Well, okay, so DCR, our IT, there is, and, in, as a result of our, I think we got, got a supplemental finding or something about not being on our disaster recovery program good enough. Doesn't really have anyone that can take any action on it. So in order to appease that world in the auditor land, we, we told them that we would establish an IT committee that will get on that as well as all the other IT matters of the city. We met Tom, and they had Lady of DCR, myself, we met at Tom's office to kind of hammer out what this would look like. And so we come up with this, or I came up with this resolution so you can understand what the roles of all of it. It's yet another committee. It would be real similar to the qualification committee in that I would be tasked with keeping minutes on it so that you know what was said, and so that ends up recording the meetings. Something important, Tom, you might have more input on the why of this and the importance of it.
Because of the findings that come out, two of which are in this supplemental for the auditor, just completed, for some reason, the finance director seems to be the IT expert. Well, I didn't go to school, so that's not one of the things that I'm pretty much first in about how to implement a disaster recovery plan and, but according to the audit, they say that the biggest responsibility in a disaster or any kind of issue that happens as far as a breach is concerned, has the biggest impact to the finance department. That's why it seems to fall under the finance director. And I said, if this is going to be the case, then I need to get involved in part of our response to them last year, which was January of this year, in the '23 audit, was that we would form an IT committee so that all the players would get involved. They liked that idea, and that was a promise that we made as far as the response to the '23 audit. Now it's also going to be the response for '24, but they also know that it's, it's in the process of being implemented, so it was, it was fine. They liked that idea, that multiple players were involved, DCR is actively involved, and they know exactly what now is being required as far as the audit is concerned and the IT standard practices for the state. So that's why we're doing the committee approach. Everybody has a role to play in all of this.
Well, beyond the disaster recovery attention that we would, that we put to that through this, could be, is also the whole rapidly advancing realm of AI. That's another thing legislature has demanded that the city's adopted AI policy. Beautiful League is in the works on that. This committee, if you see fit that we should have it, we'll cover those things as well, and it includes each departmental director in the input on that. So there's a lot to IT in our city.
Network access as well, software implementation.
It's a service of the.
It preserves a lot.
The person that wears the IT hat here in Greenwood is you.
Well, DCR.
I think DCR is our subcontractor, but the person that's kind of communicating with DCR.
The police department has one.
We have a resident in the house, Daniel Wayhan.
Daniel Wayhan owns the software, uh, IT company. He services all of Almond, the whole city of Almond. We're fortunate enough to have him in-house of all places. He does all of our IT.
And DC does all of ours.
And then also they do, well, they do our emails, the city line emails.
DC does Schultz emails.
Yes.
So can we have Daniel on this committee? Would it be?
We, I recommended him to be on this committee. I think it's very important. There is a law coming down where cities do have to adopt AI policy, because if you remember the AI policy that was presented last month or the month before, it basically said, no AI. Well, that's, in this day and age, you just can't do that. If you Google search something, you're, you're an AI researcher. So I think this committee is going to be a great thing, and we can figure out what we're requiring.
And we're only going to meet quarterly, and so, I mean, because it's not, it's not a, you know, as much of a workforce thing as, say, the qualification committee, which we're meeting, not last month for now.
So in membership, it says each departmental director and his or her appointee, so yours is going to be Daniel.
Yes, sir.
And we've already kind of internally decided that that'd be the best. And of course, Chief can come anytime once and come in on meeting. We're going to try to hold him virtual.
Right, I'm like Mr. Tom, though. I mean, it's computers are not my forte. I just, us coming on that dialing would really give a solid input. Other than the fact that we have to secure our network and DOJ standards, FBI standards, ACIS and NCS standards, got to be in the end by, but it's got to be secure. Which I'm sure that's what they're, I'm sure that's what they're wanting to do, finance, finance with the city so somebody can't do it like another city, take, hijack their money.
Well, this committee also kind of be a go-to committee when, you know, the department's looking at a different piece of software, or a new software, or whatever, see how it all integrates with the city and stuff.
Is there no issues as far as network is concerned, and do games access?
That's one of the big pieces of it too, for security reasons. And since Daniel will be on there and DCR will be in our meeting, somebody from DCR will always be in our meeting, that'll be covered because you really don't do anything here without DCR nor a guy.
One, one other thing, it'd be, it'd be nice to have a primary and alternate. I don't perceive Daniel ruining anywhere, but if somebody came in and offered him a ton of money, I could lose my IT person fairly quick. So if we had a primary and alternate, the alternate.
Let's go for respect to you. You're, you're a director, so in respect to you, and you designate whoever you want.
All right, and I would probably have to go back and DCS and loop that.
And they do communicate with them, so they, they, they talk.
So it says in here, each departmental director and his or her appointee, the commissions are here, including them underneath, the water sewer commission, including them under departmental director?
Oh, yeah. It's all the directors, why does not they have a commission? I mean, there's no director for letting the commissions, so no, but, but those, those the other commissions are all.
Where's this other outfit we talked about that owners?
Alloso good, the company Alloso good?
Yeah, where they can all this.
That's a software.
I'm officially off this.
Oh, yeah, we got third chapter.
Well, at any time, and everybody in this room, staff knows that, you talked about it not being your forte, I don't even spell forte, or IT as far as that goes. So I would like to attend just to be the attendee, that I can, if it comes down to me appointing somebody that knows something, anything, which would be anything more than I know, I don't have a problem with that at all.
That's why it says in the votes, you know, both of you can. And mainly, the attention that we put hard in disaster recovery is paramount, because that continuity plan is neglected. And none of, we have a very small staff here. We're jabbering, we're wearing somebody's hat always, so things get on backboard, and that's a really important thing to not land on a backboard, burn a red on, because things just rapidly change, you know? Every two years, everything's outdated. I mean, that plan's really outdated when two years, three years go by. So we got, we got to get on it.
So what, what do we pay DCR to do? Are they the one charging?
It's part of their, it's built into their service hours that they use.
Their blocks of time.
It's not an additional fee. It's just, if they come and spend an hour, that's off of that bundle that we have.
Don't we stand a backup disaster recovery plan, not in there, Rob just got description?
Oh, no, they have the, we're, we're going to work with them to modify that update based on all the stuff that they've done. For instance, back in the old days, we had one backup to the servers, and then we have two now, that was redundant over to station two. Well, now we have three, because now we're back to the throttle. All those things have changed, but we haven't modified our actual paper documents to show what is, what they have done. So what we're going to do is put our heads together and get it so that it can be set up to Arkansas, which is like law, so that they can look at it and view it, and then they want to know, okay, what's your plans for testing? We have to do a test. Some of it's a lot of damn work than you guys do.
Because our recovery CD, or whatever they are now, are in Farmer's Bay, down there on 71 South, far away, in case it were ever. And it's just, there's a lot of things about that need to happen that are just being neglected. And DCR has been integral in what we've got, but they can't keep it going without us.
I just, so we're praying they'll keep that thing up there?
They do. It's just that we have to get it formulated in such a way that, that lingo and that verbiage that needs to be documented and how to document it, they're going to have to help us with that.
Plus, we know what legislature all, all it wants more than they know what they want.
Is one of your question, it's open?
I've done one before, and it was in its early stages. So more than anything, it's just a paper plan saying, if this city hall was leveled, you're going to go to this location, you're going to load all this soft, you know, you just have to literally say physically what you're going to do, and DCR will have all that technology, but you have to say in a plan, I'm going to drive to this location, I'm going to have these many computer. It's, it's almost ridiculous in a way, but you have to physically write that all down and say, these are the people we'll call. I mean, it's just a paper, you know, DCR could recreate everything we have somewhere like that, but you have to put it in the document.
We have to show Arkansas that as a city, we will resume operations, and this is how we're going to do it.
And they just want it buried, like, put the, you know, the thumb dry in the computer as what we are. You have to just write down everything you're going to do and who's going to be in charge.
We already have that, it's just outdated. Please change.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Recker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Braymore?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, thank, thank you, gentlemen. So number three is a resolution to mend budget for roof replacement, City Hall, 100, come up and address this. We, the office that I gave up a couple of years, few years ago, where Tom's office is now, is kind of our first, oh, we got a leak issue in there. And so, as our building inspector should, had, had some guys come out and take a look at it, see, tell them what you're holding down.
Uh, it's a little, it's quite frank, it's original to the building, it's typical catches up there. We've got a lot of antennas put on the roof over the years, old and graved, it's holding the roof. We've got, I think I'll pop them ahead, six active leaks throughout the facility right now. We've been trying to manage those since I've been here. We've had one show up in the finance director's office, it's pretty substantial. So I decided to contact a couple of roofing companies and have them provide us with some quotes, just to ballpark what an annual would be to have a roof replacing young. I think that was a wise decision, just based on the quotes that I got to fix the roof with the same materials, was well over double the price as it was to replace it with the new modern materials, TPO roof. What we have now is a modified bim and roll roofing. It's, it's got about a 20-year lifespan, I think the building's 25 years old. So we've got our life expectancy out of the roof. I've given all the quotes to Tom, so I don't have any money to give you for that, but I think the lowest price there was just under 50,000, and they went from there and doubled up to, I think, one was 116,000 to replace it with the materials that we currently have.
I guess I don't understand here when you says, you know, fix the leaks and existing cat flashes after installing a new TPO. So the new TPO hasn't been installed yet?
Correct, most of them. TPO membrane is what the fire department has on their flat roof. According to today's standard, our roof does actually not have enough pitch for the roll roofing that it has on there now. It was probably sufficient back in the day. It's very flat, and they were TPO specializes. So they won't have to take the existing roofing off, they will just lay down foam membrane and TPO over the top of that.
This is not something that was quoted before, Greg?
This is not, now, up until this point, a lot of the big rainstorms that we've had in the last couple of months have highlighted a lot of the bigger, bigger leaks around the facility. It's been one or two here or there that have been fairer minor, but they've aged pretty The newest one I think showed up a month ago, over by the water office, and every time it rains now, the spot grows larger and larger.
I guess I'll, the only pride of there is say, it should be like after consideration of a, a new TPO, of, you're, you're looking at that, but you decided you know we're going to go to the sun there and commit that, need a whole new kind of roof structure there, right? To me, it looks like we already got a new TPO, then all of a sudden, now we're finding all these leaks, and it seems like, you know, I just kind of have fault with that right there, you know?
I'm not familiar with what you're reading, I thought.
The wording comes right from the muscle exteriors work order, what they've been, what they quoted, and go off of that first paragraph.
That's what we're implementing, is a new TPO system or not?
Or you only have the resolution.
Would you tell us about the resolution?
Well, the wording in the resolution comes right from the actual quote from the company as far as what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah, well, what AC's saying is that the resolution sounds like we've already installed the TPO membrane, and now we've got leaks around the cat flashes.
That wording is to be changed around.
That's what it kind of reads like.
It, it does, it reads like we're fixing issues after we've had the roof installed. We have, we have not had any roofing installed. Of the three companies that it would require, they all take core samples of our roof, they resealed those areas down. That is the only work that's been done on our roof up to this time.
Okay, so the wording down here, just so you understand what they do, says remove all existing metal cat flashes around the perimeter of the roof, install and. Install and properly slow bias sub installation board to ensure positive drainage. Install a new TPO membrane roofing system, fully adhere or mechanically fast to best specified. Install new pipe roofs and all required flashing details to ensure a watertight seal around all penetrations and transitions. Reinstall all perimeter metal cap flashings after membrane installation is completed. It's quite exact. All work will be performed according to manufacturer specification, we'll include all the codes to ensure long-lasting girl, consistent. That's why the wording says that. But if it's confusing, we'll modify that to be exactly what they're doing.
We're just replacing the roof, right?
Yeah, the cap flashing goes on last of everything.
And the roof costs $49,515. Not in our budget, that's a complete roof.
Yes, sir. All, with all exception of metal roofing. We've got standing seam metal roofing over all of the steep pitch portion of the facility. This is just the flat roof only, which are both wings of the building. This is about 25 years or 20 here? 20 here, I think is TPO, that's about the standard nowadays. They used to throw out 25, 30 years with rolled roofing and tan coat, asphalt shingles. That's not really the case anymore. It's all about 20.
And we have damaged ceiling tiles all over the building and we're just going to?
Yeah, we'll have to find some replacements. We can pull some matching tiled up storage closets and.
So how does it fix our general fine?
$49,000. Now, you have, you have, you have some misses in the whole of the finance meeting that I did the other day. I told you about some of the savings there. There's the savings that's not going to happen from the FEMA that you have, you have the 38,000, 34,000 rather than from the sale of the driveway. You have, I think there was one other orange asset was budgeted that you mentioned. But right now, he's in a, he's in a fairly decent position to afford that as far as the issue's budget is concerned.
And this is an unbelievably low price of our, reading this correctly, so hopefully we can get it done with that. Not a bunch of change of orders.
My intention, we had no change orders, I had this kind of.
My intention would be not to approve any of these things, okay? Because either bid the job right or not at all. You know, I say that's, I get tired of these guys still in here. I heard somebody say 116 grand a bid, I mean, that's a lot cheaper. So that's great, but look.
I had that company get to that, so the 116 was skewed a little bit because it's replacing what we have now, which is a slightly more expensive product. I think the quote for item for item was roughly 96,000 compared to this 49,000.
And this is a quality deal, quality contractors.
Yes, sir.
How many years do we go this way?
They're all 20 years. So all of these quotes were for the same materials, TPO as far as the material standard for today for flat roofs.
My question, we adopt the resolution?
Second. Motion is taken to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
No.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Michael. Next is number four, resolution to amend budget for Mount Harmony turn lane project cost. So this does not give you the total cost from said project. This is a $5,000 expense for initial fees that we're not charging, obviously, sales tax, we didn't know about it. I'd ask R-Dot to look at this project, but this gets the ball rolling, I guess, anyway, but. Tom, do you have the numbers?
It doesn't have it in the.
No, I know it's not written.
Document anywhere.
It's R-Dot asking for that for their administrative.
Right.
Get going.
Well, I'm talking about our, our estimate, estimate cost, do you have a check? We talked about it already.
Yeah, we talked about it.
And you got to prove this, that.
It wasn't 2A.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds right.
It was under 3A. Yeah, it was under 3A, I think it was 2A.
Okay, but this is, again, it's not what you can read.
So this starts the design project, or maybe $5,000 start the design.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And does, does it, when they, what do we receive for that? Do we receive complete engineering?
Well, they're going to do it, so we're not, we're not an engineer handing it over to us. I can, I can promise you, they have to do that.
For some reason, you don't do the project after they come back and say, this is what it is, and then you're off that $5,000.
And we just. I'd like a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. A motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Recker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yep.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. I think this is going to be great.
We want to delete the sidewalk, you know, this, that sidewalk gets used a lot.
Well, this is, this is on Tim. Turn lane to go to now.
Okay, it's not Tim's roof company that I'm talking about, I was thinking.
Yeah, no, it's, there's a self-proclaimed turn lane there already from people that go, but this is actually made with a turn lane.
That's what we discussed more about years ago, in the middle.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Number five is Water Waste Water Commission Resolution to Definite Salary Matrix to Add Water Waste Water Forming Position. You're here, so.
At page two, very bottom, it's shaded, but I don't think page two is very.
Barely, barely.
Probably so. Page two, very bottom, that is the change they're adding. And the Water Waste Water Commission approved this unanimously. They're forwarding on to you for formal adoption in our salary matrix. If you have any questions, Tanya's here and Teresa's here.
I'm not hiring anybody, we're just, I didn't know the tier by, by the structure.
I'll address that. What we've done is we've eliminated two positions. You were, you weren't, I mean, Monday night. And adding to that now, a form and three position. That form and three position is going to take over coordinating the two segments of the wastewater treatment and distribution. That person will also be kind of ready to take on the position of director eventually, or if the director is in absent, also to manage some of the construction. So we're going to take some of that, we've done, we've done our budget, we're not increasing our budget at all. We'll be using the salary that we've eliminated to make that position. And it could be, we might hire somebody or we may come up with the other.
What were the two that you eliminated?
One was the administrative assistant and the other is a mechanic.
Correct.
Who's what?
Mechanic.
Mechanic.
So you didn't delete anything from this matrix or kind of make that clear?
It's also kind of tracks with the way the water, the water. But the main, the main issue is to get this person in there and start learning, hopefully training to take over a director's position. That's, that's where we seem to have culture. And that, that we have to target to, if you hire somebody additional promotion.
Let's all change the matrix.
Correct.
So you're saying that the administrative assistant and the mechanic spot, you all have, they're still in the matrix because y'all have not, you know?
We don't have anybody.
You made those positions.
And then obviously for next year's budget, we'll build it all back.
What are you doing, are you, should I start? Are you sharing mechanic now with, I don't know, it hasn't, did that pass, is that happening now? What are you, what are you doing about mechanic?
I mean, it used to be shared with the water, but there's no one in that position. So we can't mechanic it ourselves, we cover it out, which we've kind of done. I don't even know what that person did.
We, we go through the process as well.
I thought you did, and I knew Randy.
Since Randy retired, they had retired this position.
That was a shared.
Right, so we've been helping out them before we came.
Tim attempted, but we haven't had anyone qualify.
Randy Gregory was actually good in all the departments.
I agree with that.
Godfrey, Godfrey.
Godfrey, Godfrey.
He was, he was watering sewer, shared.
Yeah.
We had our own mechanic.
Yeah.
A long time ago, I think Randy did everybody.
Yeah, because he was actually in the street.
Yeah.
He's wearing multiple hats and they got split. Now, now you're ahead of replacement.
We worry about.
I think one of the issues is that for that type of position, it really exceeds our, what we feel we can afford in salary position. It doesn't mean some kind of down the line, but for the remaining of this year, this is what we would like to do. Same thing.
Randy was pretty talented.
He was a good mechanic for a replacement.
I'd like a motion we pass this resolution for an office resolution.
I'll take it.
And motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Recker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Were you married?
Yes, yes. Before, I was going to ask Ms. Teresa something. I guess I should have done it back up in committee reports, but I forgot, didn't think about it for the wastewater committee. And I don't wish you a leave or, so one more, I think, all the. So we're talking about the Sonic Lodge and the Fine Arts. There's been talk of a fire rider that needs to go in that area.
Okay.
And I was just curious, I know that the Water Waste Water Commission, I think every year has two, they float around and they just, they can put in, install wherever they want, maybe, or if that must be an option, well, who do I need to butter up for that?
I think we can bring it up to Tim.
I have talked to him a little bit about it, but I haven't gone out to him. I just was kind of curious, we're getting kind of close to them, I guess.
Well, we want to definitely be in compliance with the state and depending on what's, I don't think it would require it for the lodge, but for the Fine Arts Center, probably going to have to have one there.
Well, that initially was what we were told, was that there would be one for the lodge, it would save us.
Yeah.
We could have consolidated that.
We'd have to do whatever is required.
Okay, I was thinking now if we've got another reason, not just those little decrepit parts at the Sonic Lodge, maybe we can get one put in there, kill two birds with one stone.
Right. I'll, I'll.
I'll be.
I'll address that.
You forgot to say.
Well, I didn't want to think I'd make you part of the whole bit. I wanted to fit one of them.
Two efforts.
Yes, sir.
I needed to back up, just to ask a question on four. So on this Mount Harmony intersection improvement.
Yes, sir.
So there's going to be obviously this turning ring, maybe it's 100 foot long. Does that, do I have it in my mind?
Yes.
Okay, so who's the point man on this design? When the design comes back, who is it?
It's going to be Jeff.
Jeff, you're the point man.
I put him as the point man because it's straight.
Correct, sounds reasonable.
Yes.
So what I want to make sure of is that they know we have a pedestrian, pedestrian circulation land that's existed for 25 years. And that even though it's only maybe 100 feet of sidewalk, it needs to be there, it needs to be planned for. And we don't wind up with some street light, the pole coming right down where the sidewalk should be, that it's all been taking into effect. And we're not trying to backwards engineer something because they left something out, so.
I just thought we said.
You're the point man, so will we see the design when they present it? Or is it just, once we turn it over, they're going to do what they do?
No, we'll, we will definitely see it.
Yeah, and they, I mean, they allow us to give input and things like that. It's not a, it's not just them taking over, you know? But it's going to be their contractor doing the work.
Well, even though that it's just 100 feet long, I want to see that 100 foot sidewalk or whatever was the trail or what, you know, the 10 foot wide for a trail. Whatever planning says looks good, looks right.
Well, I thought about what you said, I think, in the budget meeting or the last meeting, about doing sections.
Like 280 feet a year?
And that might be a good project.
Well, then that, when they get through, that 250 feet may take you to the new highway improvement.
Exactly.
And then you got another circular, you know, you got kids who can walk to town from Mount Harmony or ride their bike or whatever.
The thing that affects that somewhat is, I guess that, that's going to turn a little bit because they're going to demolish the second bridge. And so it shifts over this way, so we'll kind of have to be in line with that as well.
Well, I guess one also is like when we built the life down at the intersection, at the end, we realized there's a, a big gigantic box, a control box in front of the Welcome to Greenwood sign. $50,000 later, we got to move 10 feet and now it looks good. But in the end, in a planning portion, we want to catch things like that before we do things like that. And somebody at the end says, why did you do that? Well, it'll cost us $50,000 to fix it. We don't want to do that.
But it didn't.
Just.
But it didn't.
Or whatever.
R-Dot did that. I, I, I caught R-Dot and I said, listen, this is on my fly. And it took me about four people before we met back out there and then we.
Because that's originally their life.
Yeah, we thought we did.
Let's just try to catch these things on the beginning. And if you can involve planning, so that planning can say, hey, pedestrian circulation says that won't be a five foot sidewalk, it'll be 10 foot. Because it's actually a trail, a purpose trail through there. And then we go into, what we ask you to do is make the 250 feet, like every year, do a 250 feet until we get there. All right, you're the point man, thank you. And I'd like to see.
You're welcome.
We would like to see some details at a point, but.
As soon as I get them, I'll share.
Well, the way I understood it, we just approved five grand and we'll have a pad of the bound, but we don't like what we see.
Well, I hope we like what we see, because then they can proceed on and we'll go 10%.
All right.
I just want a sidewalk.
I get you.
Bottom line, sidewalk.
Yeah, before I go on, I'm able to do it while I go on. Rachel, we've got several guests and we welcome all of them, we don't really have that many guests. We've got two guests from Waldron with us tonight, and these guys are city councilmen down there. I'm not, I guess they're here to watch and see how not to do a council meeting. So Mr. Jeff Gilbert and David Cora. So welcome, gentlemen, to our show.
We have our blood.
Long talk, orgies are riding out. Oh, wow.
They're not taking track of this back, are they?
Did they ask for it?
No, we got, we got it Thursday night.
Thursday night, and I saw the agenda, it looks like fun, by the way. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'll be here for a minute. All right, moving on, is number six, city attorney repealing request in order to 22-15, curative or empty tax first reading.
I'd like to ask that you guys table this next month. We've got some more work we need to do here specifically on section one. We do not want to repeal 22-15 or 10-39, so we are going to bring this back next month if you guys table it.
Motion taken.
Second.
Motion second to table.
It's the second.
How do you round?
Round. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Number seven is resolutions to amend budget for former senior citizen repairs. Stan, Stan Open Eye took a walkthrough, we've done several walkthroughs. Now that the senior, now that the center has officially moved over to our new facility, they're in there a couple of months now, loving it, everything's great. They still need some things, but so our obligation is to leave that facility, the building, I'm talking about the old center, the bank building, as good as we can, like we found it some 20 something years ago. And over those years, we, the city has done very, very little to maintain that facility. very, very little to maintain that facility, uh, we did retrofit, uh, one or twice, I think, over those years, we've done a few things on the outside, I have already, uh, we've already done the work needed on the outside of the building, we've already done that, we did, we did painting, uh, we did a little bit of, quite a bit of caulking, repair windows, things like that, and the most recent thing is we restripped the parking lot, uh, for them. So now, we're in the ins, we're on the inside, they, when I said we moved out, or as the center has moved out, there's still some things left in there, there's some equipment that belongs to them, there's a, there's a little bit that belongs to us, that we need to do there, uh, from the new building, just to keep them going until we got the new building. But most of all of this, or all of this, is painting, caulking, uh, light, some light fixtures that have been broken, uh, certainly light bulbs, there's not hardly a bulb in there that looks like a light bulb anymore, they're brown, so this is, this is what this represents, this fifteen eight, and I think he's got it up to sixteen, to not exceed sixteen, so I did a walkthrough to Stan Oak, and Stan Oak, I will tell you, I don't mind telling you, I want to tell you that he's very, if you know Stan Oak, he's actually pretty conservative with, with his money, for sure, and he told me he wants to be conservative with our money, so this is not painting every single wall in that building, because it would probably be twice that much or more, so he would look at a wall, and if it wasn't too bad, he would say, don't worry about that, let's paint this one over here where it's all marred up by whatever usage, uh, but it, but it represents that, and so he's, he's very satisfied, he doesn't even know what this cost, and I don't know that I told him yet, but he walked through, and he told, uh, Jackie, what's his last name?
James.
Who went, this gentleman that I took through, who did all the work, and a lot of work along with Butch Bean back in the day here in City Hall, and, uh, he told Jackie, he said, I'm telling you what I'd kind of like to see done, the mayor has to approve any of it before you do it, so we agree upon the work to be done, it'll leave it in good shape, nice shape, not brand new by any means, but at least put it in shape where he can then, he is in the bank, Stan Oak can offer it up as a rental, because that's, that's their goal, is to rent this facility out to all of us, and we're, I'm trying to talk him into a stakeout, but they'd spend a whole lot of money to, to see that happen, so, uh, that's what this is, I suggested to Tom, when as soon as we received the thirty-six, thirty-four thousand dollars on our payment from R.D.O. for right of way out of the new facility, that I thought it'd be appropriate to utilize that money, or with this, anything to do with, with this and or anything we need to do in the future for the center, uh, with that, oh, thirty-four thousand dollars, Tom agreed with me, and we got a resolution that, that represents that.
Treasury clerk also agreed.
And the treasury clerk agreed, yeah, yes.
I was just wondering, Mayor, I mean, since we're going to do all these remedial repairs, we're going to kind of put it in, kind of, the good structure, or whatever, you know, to hand it back to them, so, but I'm thinking, it seems like we're always looking for storage places, I mean, either it's for files, or whatever, you know, and it seems like we're running out of, I mean, would it not be individual to try to continue the relationship at a dollar a year?
That's not going to happen.
For storage?
I, I mean, I, I'm not going to say, I take that back, I'm not saying it won't, the bank, and Stan Oak in particular, are looking forward to rent that bill, that lease that facility, for quote-unquote real money. Uh, would they do that? I didn't ask, uh, we could probably fill it, but we would be filling, it would be like my garage, that's a big building, we would be filling it full of stuff that we probably will never touch, like my garage, I've got stuff in there that I don't even need, I don't even, we couldn't do this, so.
And the roof leak, what, they...
The roof has leaked, it is currently not leaking.
Spent money on it.
Because we would be spending money some more, but currently it is in, it's in okay shape, uh, so.
At what point is our obligation to remodel their building before they handle it?
That's it, that's it.
It's the process.
We, so, was there pictures of the parking lot before we got in there, was it painted freshly when we took it over?
Well, I couldn't swear to that.
Leased lot.
But we've had it for twenty-five years for a dollar a year, we owe them something.
I wouldn't mind it.
We owe them.
They agreed to leases.
I mean, in that lease agreement, did it mention putting back, filling the gas tank full and bringing it back to the rental car shop?
You do need to do that.
Right.
Right.
But it was in our lease agreement with the banks, and repaint everything and restructure it.
It does not, it does not get specific at all, but I think fifteen thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, it was pretty decent for twenty-five years.
It wasn't the agreement that we were supposed to kind of...
It was to keep it up, it doesn't, no, what I meant was, it didn't say repaint, strip, it didn't say this, or this, or that. Yeah, absolutely.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution utilizing the money refunded by this R.D.O.
Second.
And motion is second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you very much, this will begin tomorrow with your approval, tonight, so moving on. Uh, moving on to, uh, number eight, the police resolution updating for insurance, housing for sworn personnel. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this, uh, resolution is requested by the officers, last year, I changed this policy, this P D nine dash three, I changed it to...
Whereas they should...
Last year, we got the, we paid in-house for personal, personal uniforms, I've requested Mr. Tom, this year, we give it in a payroll check, so last year, we, we spent money on a suit and tie for one of the officers, the officers thought that that needed to be approved by the council, uh, it was a misunderstanding by me, and I thought that if y'all passed the budget for the year without allowance going to each officer, that that was y'all's lesson, and my apologies, but I'll, if there's something I should have put in that...
Every other department seems like that, well, why can't we do it?
My apologies, if there's any questions, everybody explain if there's, uh, just something that the officer requested, I'll send you off. I think it was two hundred-ish dollars. Did I explain that right, Mr. Brown?
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
And motion is second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Chief. Number nine is parks, resolution to amend air, it says compressor, but I think it's conditioner, uh, unit replacement, Ed Wilkinson, who's the head?
Uh, last year, we spent some maintenance money on the air conditioning unit on the north side of the building, this year, we actually spent a little bit more, uh, I think so for last year and this year was close to twenty-four hundred dollars, uh, the blower had disappeared, it's been really gone on that north unit, they asked for six thousand dollars to repair it, I think it's just a better use of the money to go ahead and replace it, and then budget for the replacement for the south unit next year.
Okay, this is fine with the Parks Commission?
Give this, that's most of the person.
There's not any additional money needed, is there, is it coming from budgeted money for the parks?
It is coming from our budget, but we did not budget this expense.
But you have enough to cover it in your own money?
Absolutely.
Right, plus, this is a revenue-producing entity, rather than, so we don't want to do anything that would probably somebody from Randy.
The secondary concern is that we're kind of living along with one unit.
And it's probably the best revenue producer in the city. Everything else, we operate as a service. I, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Craig, thank you, gentlemen. Number ten, uh, get Mr. Teff up here, so this is a change order for some of the bridges, or fox run.
I think I mentioned, last meeting, probably tell anyone the questions that, uh, I'd become back to you this medium, with, uh, some more drainage, uh, plans for, uh, fox run, uh, we've had several instances of the water running over across Main Street into Tommy Tenscher's yard, and we can seal, and so the contractors identified several places that we should, uh, add additional inlet boxes on the door side, so before we want to asphalt, we want to get those in, um, there's also a arm that we're built up towards the splash pad, to hold some of that water up there using riprock, and so the contractor will install that, and then downward, the water will come across, we'll have to have a pipe, a pipe to the ditch, and then, I think I told you about the trench drain that we're going to install there, uh, just before you get to Main Street, uh, to take care of that water, we're afraid that, once that's paved, that water will just come straight down that hill and right down Main Street, so, uh, to avoid that, we're going to put that trench drain in, kind of like a, best thing to compare it to is Calabar, but it's not, uh, it's a mesh, that, uh, you can walk over, or you can ride your bike over, not get your fingers and toes caught in or anything, but, but we'll take, take the brunt of that water coming off the, uh, the road itself, uh, we did learn that the, uh, inlet boxes that we do have, because some of this have already been silted in, and so that's not part of the, that's just part of maintenance, uh, but we, they identified those because of that, they think that we would need these other inlet boxes to, to deflect some of that water, be going on the door side of, uh, the road.
You like using Olson Engineering?
Well...
I think they kind of engineer as long as they go.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is the project that they, uh, were originally on, uh, I, I probably won't, uh, be having any more done.
We've had, what, three meetings with Olson during this process, not one more, I mean, several have found, two or three in person, in my conference room, and, yeah, we're just trying to get this thing done.
The, uh, original engineer on the project was a Greenwood person, and he's no longer with them, and so we didn't get the service that we thought we were getting, so, uh, yeah, I think some of these are probably shortcomings, uh, given though the rock, and, you know, we did change that design of going over instead of under, because it was much more rocky, and so that has affected the runoff, every time you strike those rocks, you've got more water coming, groundwater coming out, we've seen a little bit of water coming off the pad itself, or, uh, majority of it's supposed to be, uh, receding, but you get people with their splash, and water just coming out, so we, we're trying to get care of that as well, and not causing more problems in the neighborhood.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, I guess, the part of the, the scope of the engineering project, I mean, include a drainage study, that they would be...
It, it did, it did, and the inlet boxes that we got satisfied what they had, but when we changed the design, had to change the design, I think it left some gaps that they didn't fill at that time.
And just, just for additional, not to, it's not just Mr. Tenscher's house, but the gentleman that lives next door, he, he sent me a private, or a message to the mayor's page, I guess, the mayor's website, and I went to visit with him, it's, it's the, the wife, Mr., through the, yeah, Miss White's house there, he, he moved in, and he took me around, he's very nice, very cordial, very understanding, but he took me around at the back, if you look at the front of his yard, you really don't see a lot of damage, because it's all going over Thomas, but what's not going over Thomas is coming in his backyard, and he had a, a creek or ditch, with the water that created that, so.
So, in the thirty, you know, change orders for thirty-seven thousand and three hundred sixty-six dollars?
Yes.
And in that, what of it's actually micro material, and how much of that is actually reengineering?
Uh, we didn't really have to pay much for reengineering, uh, because, uh, this is a kind of a, a gap, I think, the page, there's not the page, the, the one page, I think you...
They have, they have the...
Okay, the, the one that's a, a grid shows, but...
That has color, probably, they got color.
They got color, okay, uh...
Are you talking about this one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's the, the middle, paid before the color.
That's got a list of all the items that will be paid for, uh, mostly, mostly materials on this.
Is this something where the contractor's having to come back, or is he, is he gone and...
Yeah, we were to the point where, um, the, when we were ready for asphalt, uh, then we saw some of the shortcomings, and the, and the south side, you can see there's water running right now, and we have, you know, that range we've got this day is completely significant, and there's still water running.
So, what's the time, we pre, the previous, what time will it be completed?
I, I would think it'll be thirty days.
Okay, so he's adding ninety calendar days to the contract work?
Yeah, it's not going to take that long, they're, they are still in town, working on another project for us, so they're not getting mobilized very much to...
What, CB?
CB, they're working on that Spruce Street drainage up there.
Okay, so they're right across the street?
They're right across the street, so we're not paying mobilization or anything like that on this.
I make a motion, we approve our resolution.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve?
I think so.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we're trying to get this, I don't know what this, how old this little colored flat hill in here, we're looking at, for this future senior center, I'd like to...
I saw that today.
Yeah, that is actually on the, the background of the CAD files, uh, and that's what they did to the whole lane, this project onto the CAD files that we already had, and so that's, that's a remnant of that.
That, that took me back today, because I looked up there, and I thought, well, that's, that is, that was my desire, or when I approached him, I said, hey, how about we put it up here, how cool would that be, and unanimously, Frank's here, not, he didn't necessarily, but they went, uh, no, perhaps we don't want it up there, plus, we didn't have five million dollars at the time.
And that, that data, that their, their lane is over, is not theirs, it's a lot, but you can't change it from CAD like you would, right, the road was strong.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Jeff. Uh, number eleven is a fire resolution, a resolution invited for monitor. Chief.
Uh, Mayor, Council, Mr. Terry, uh, our monitor that's on the, on the tower, uh, years ago was damaged, we had it repaired, and we had it repaired at certain times, standing and seeing that, it's finally giving out, uh, that's a couple times we tried to use it, we had to shut down the power on the tower just to, and turn it back on, get it back activated, uh, don't need to do the understructure fire, you know, and so, uh, I got to pull on, changing the, the, uh, the monitor out, and talk with, uh, Tom back, figure out where we get the money, and, uh, and basically, city sales and use tax, and just began the budget, uh, there with, uh, things, repairs, fire, equipment, that amount, but normally, about five thousand dollars, and then we, uh, got the property, thirteen thousand dollars on this, I've got a quote there, uh, this is going to be a T S E, a monsoon monitor, it's the standard monitor that they, they put on towers now, and this is going through our second dealer over in Park, the heart of the fire trucks, and they get a huge discount to, to, I was expecting to be a lot more, I got a quote, about five years ago, fifteen grand for one, so I bet that's hard to get fixing, get fixing, and so when we came back at twelve nine twelve, I, I called in, said, we sure got it, uh, probably, at least, well, we get a major discount because of our truck sales compared to others.
So, this is not, this is, was not a budgeted item, it exceeds your budget, this comes out of your collected city sales and use tax, that's restricted, just to you?
Yes.
And, okay.
He could probably absorb it with the budget that he's kind of operating with, but we know with the velocity of going in, out, coming out, and for a resolution, that way it'll be.
That is a large purchase, I want to talk to Council about it.
Is that a troll in the water? I'll make a motion, we pass this resolution.
Second.
Motion second to pass resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Greenwater?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, move on to council forum. Gentlemen?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Department of Reports and Questions, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I know, I know. So Department heads are here, you see, you got any questions, gentlemen, for these folks?
Street sweeper.
Street sweeper?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sound down.
We don't operate as much this time of year because we're lowing so much. And when we operate, we're, we're trying to believe what the Lord is trying to give. But...
You got a place at East? Well, I just noticed a few places here in town, but I've been going to the counter here in the morning, well, later, yeah.
Yeah, they're already out. They're all lawless too. They're outgoing before, before most people are up even on the driveways and...
Mr. Baker, I'd say if you do see something like that, then let us know.
Yeah, just let me know if there's a, a spot that you see this needs something, we can make a special effort to do that.
Danielle, get her out.
Sure.
Did I say that? Wow, okay. Anything else from any Department head?
What?
Uh, council forum.
Might want to complain to something Danielle said a little bit.
You're going to complain?
No, something she's, I'm complaining about something she said a little bit.
Okay.
Well, she mentioned she's wearing a bunch of hats. And I'm not sure, I mean, her salary is tax dollars, citizens. And she's talking about doing a bunch of stuff for the municipal league, I don't know if she was just kidding or if that was something she does, but I don't know what... I don't know how much stuff we'd ever be worried about in your position in the municipal league and how that operates. Well, you know, we're...
Yeah, no, you're fine and she can speak for herself too. So as the president of the municipal league, I am tasked with meetings, more meetings than I had before, going places. So her communication with the municipal league has increased.
I just didn't know whether they had somebody to provide you, you see what that position would have...
Well, I, they have Valerie, I can't remember Valerie's title up there, but she, she does that with the league for me. But you can't, she can't do it without Danielle's assistance for me. Danielle's my calendar. So she, it has put more on her, I mean, I'm the first to say, to tell you that in the background with that. So more has been put on her due to that position. And, and as you know, she, so being, being an assistant to the mayor is, I know you're not saying this, but it's not a simple task. She has to answer, she is answering the phone. We have somebody that has, that is a receptionist, but she takes complaints, issues, and then replies them to me as she feels that I need to know. So to answer the specific question, she has certainly got more tasks, is that a good way to put it? Danielle, as, as, still my assistant, her role hasn't changed, but me being in that position has put more on her. Yes. So...
I'm just trying to get in front of the votes of Greenwood crowd on Facebook.
Well, until, and I know you're not questioning this necessarily, Mr. Terry, but until someone walks into shoes, an employer at City Hall, and Charlotte mentioned it earlier. It seems like we have a lot of people, but for the things that have to get done on a daily basis, it's... You may walk in here and not everybody's, you know, behind the, behind the reins, so to speak, but it's, there's a lot more on, there's a lot more on.
We really don't have a big staff for the amount of activity that we all have to do, really. So, I mean, and I'm a secretary of that association now too, and I can tell you, it's an added bunch of work that we've welcomed onto our plate for Greenwood. It's for Greenwood to, to be, to just support, you know, support, support...
So I want to make something, you didn't ask this, but now's a good time to do it probably because I haven't addressed this much. Being our, being the president of Arkansas Municipal League, I'm going to be traveling, not extensively, but I'm going to be going to Washington and different places. And you get to, you also are not required to do that as a past president, but certainly as president they expect you to. I want to make sure that the public knows that none of that, none of that travel of any kind is on the city of Greenwood. I have paid or my, all of my expenses, my travel, flights, hotel, is always paid by Arkansas Municipal League. Now, when I go to a, to a conference, a meeting in Little Rock, which I was doing anyway before I became president, that's just when you're, when you're involved, you go to Little Rock. That's on the city, you know, we equalize it, it's committed, it's a center, I mean, it's a league. So I just want to make sure that the citizens know, citizenry know, that my position now with the league is not costing the city. I may not be here every single day, but when I'm not here, I'm acting on behalf of the city of Greenwood in that capacity. Just, just for...
President of the municipal league.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Oliver, can you kind of wave the municipal league to kind of give back the, the, some of the code enforcements or the building codes? That, that you know, it's like the states are trying to take away from us as far as, you know, building codes, you know, what's been removed.
Yeah, I'm going to strap them. So as league president, that should be no. But I can sit on, and because I already do, and I have been for several years now, when I, a member as the, on the executive committee, you know, president, I'm, I'm running the meeting. There's a lot of other duties, but I'm running the meeting. So the league is constantly, I will tell you, they fight hard and every, in fact, Danielle goes down there for HR reasons. Charlotte's down there for, for what she does. Almost every meeting they have, they, the league goes over legislation. You can't really show up down there, I know that the city attorney can probably testify, I think, you can't be at a meeting down there without hearing legislation. Because they want everybody to know and they send you home with, being informed of what's being changed. And more importantly, I think Mr. Bell touched on it this morning, the gentlemen are nodding their heads because they go down there. You're informed about what's going on and you're informed about who's pushing that. And more often than not, as stated, when you get into weeds, there's some pride, there's somebody that is a, somebody and they're trying to change it for themselves and it affects the state. Unfortunately, it's, it's, it's might be, it might be good for Northwest Arkansas, but it doesn't, it's not great for Greenwood, Arkansas. So that, that's a continual thing. I can't tell you that I can get changed, but certainly as the president, I'll be more informed. I've already gained knowledge that I never thought I would as a kid. I'm like, who would have thought that Timbula would be included in that meeting? And I will say too, I've been to National League now twice, I believe, in Washington, once maybe, I think twice. And even though you may think that's a kind of a, something to go to for vacation, it, it is the AML on steroids. And so now you get to hear not just about Arkansas's problems, but you hear from states and how they fixed it or how they're working towards it to get it fixed. I don't know if that explains, does that sound fair enough, gentlemen, from, you been down there?
I mean, I had missed meetings.
Very good. Your lot will be president at one of these days.
But yeah, lots of knowledge down there.
Yeah.
You learn something different.
Every time.
Just like the ladies that spoke, like one lady that was the mayor of two hundred and seven places.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Just two point, two million dollar grant for herself, you know?
And then she spends a hundred and eighteen, she had a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and eighteen thousand goes to Mesquita. By her own, by her own... Kyo, Arkansas. The iconic capital of the world.
There you go.
We're going there in December.
Yep, the contest.
Is it fish farm? She bragged about or, or the con festival, I won't tell you what's supposed to be. But it's pretty cool. So, does that help with that? Yes, sir.
Different subjects, but also you can make us look good. The assistant in the whole league last week brought Blake and asked me a whole bunch of questions. I said, I don't know the answer to any of that, but he said, so what are you going to do about it? You need no answers. And I said, I'll bring it up. So he'd just come from a meeting and he was over at Barling and Fort Smith. I don't know exactly what was going on, but they discovered that there's kind of a, he called it a strip pit one time and then he called it a borrow pit one time. I don't know what the difference is. But he said they realized that the contractor over there that was pulling dirt out of the side of a hill or a mound wasn't paying sales tax. And that he wasn't a sales tax remitter, he didn't have a sales tax, Arkansas sales tax ID. So they were trying to get restitution out of him and he said, and I don't know why he was sitting in the meeting, I don't... But anyway, he said, you know, when they, when he started thinking about it, he said, that guy's operating in Greenwood. And I don't know which one he was talking about, I didn't ask too many detailed questions. I don't know if he was talking about the one over by the senior citizen center or the Jacob Burton one or the other Jacob Burton one, I don't know. I just said, I don't know the answer to any of that. I said, I guess I could go in and look and see if he's, actually has a sales tax ID that would, or get the start of it. And he said, well, Barling Enforcement's going after this guy and he's operating in Greenwood. And I said, I'll tell you what, I'll just bring it up. And so I had to probably...
You don't know the name, but we could probably figure it out.
I did not know the name.
You can call Rock Blake.
I can get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, how does he know he's not paying taxes or, I miss part of this, I guess?
Well, he wasn't there for that reason, he was probably there for one of the reasons he was here with us at...
Because if there's not being dropped off in Greenwood, then he doesn't pay city taxes to us.
Well, I think what the, the pit was actually in Barling and they're taking in a chaffy crossing and doing stuff with chaffy crossing. But the sales tax was not being collected and if it wasn't being collected, it wasn't being remitted. And when they started looking at it, he didn't have sales tax ID. And I'm trying to relay what Rock Blake told me the best I can, I can be slightly wrong some of this. So, but at the end of it, he said, that guy's operating in Greenwood. I wonder if he's doing the same thing in Greenwood? And I said, I do not know. He said, do you, do you know if there's any tax being remitted? And I said, I do not know. He said, do you know if he's got a sales tax ID in Greenwood? I said, it's, it's one sales tax ID you get from the state of Arkansas, I mean, not only one. And I said, I do not know. I said, I'll bring it up.
Okay, so duly noted, we can, we can look into it and would that get into, into it? The material that I'm aware of that's moving within the city for sure, most of it's going to RDOT here and the new, the bridge in the...
Forty-nine bridge.
On the forty-nine bridge, so it's going a different way. So I, I don't know if that's who, I don't know if that's who he's referring to, we, we can look into it.
I'd say the shag Barling's in, they're turning over wherever rock they can and trying to find the sales tax.
Sure, okay. Okay, yes, sir.
What about the old storage field?
Uh, interesting situation. So, Mr. Palmer can get you up to date on, on the actual legal, legal issue of it, I suppose. I can tell you what I know, that's kosher, that's cool. Okay, so what I, here's what I do know absolutely for sure is that, and he can maybe tell you what the last legal thing happened. But I received a phone call from a gentleman. I guess it's up, can't say his name, I don't know.
Lloyd Sumner.
Lloyd Sumner, Lloyd Sumner. He is a gentleman that has done, he was, did the barracks of Chaffey. Okay, that was his, that's his project, still is, although he has, I think dispersed some of that to other investors, but that's who that is. If you know him or if you don't know him, that, that's kind of ID, you know? He called me one day, I've known him for a while, he called me one day and wanted to know what I could tell him about the storage facility. And I said, here's what I know, our contact with Mr. Lewis in California, told him the last court date that we had, two court dates now. And just told him that the judge was allowing Mr. Lewis ninety days to make some improvements on the facility that we had asked him to do. Does that sound right? And then that ninety days was, when Mr. Sumner called me, was within a week of that ninety days expiring. So I said, this is where we are. And he said to me, I'm going to call him if you're okay. I said, that's, he said, I'm going to call Mr. Lewis, I'm intrigued. So he evidently did. I got a call back from Mr. Sumner, Sumner, I believe is how you say it, and said that he had made a deal with Mr. Lewis to make those improvements. And he was going to start that process and, and just inform me and he said, I will keep you up to date on what we're doing. Okay, I relayed that information to our city attorney. I don't think it changed our stance of what, what we were presenting, but, but, so they have made, I would, I don't know if I call it improvements, they have, they have been on the property. They, Mr. Sumner, whoever he's did, whoever he's got working for him, they have enclosed all the windows, covered the windows with something, not glass, but they covered all the broken glass. They removed the broken glass, covered them, and secured the building as far as we know. I'm not, I don't think you've been back over there, have you? So that's, they also started cleaning up brush, not mowing, but cleaning up around the building. They had two giant piles of debris or brush to, to burn and they asked, so it's, it's actually been moved to the back of the facility. We told them, when you get ready to burn it, let us know so we can be prepared for what you're going to do. I mean, this gentleman, Mr. Sumner, has been very forthcoming in what he's doing, what he's trying to do. He informed me that he's working with Mr. Lewis to try to get, he knows my desire for that building in the city. Either it's gone or something happens and it's revenue producing, right? Either that facility or something in its place. And he said he's been visiting with Mr. Lewis on that regard and trying to convince him, I don't want to put words in his mouth, to maybe do that down the road.
And we did get money today.
And we did get a check today for last year's...
No, no, for this year's.
This year's, I'm sorry. So we're up to date, I don't know if you knew that or not.
I, I sent it to your office this afternoon.
So the man was here. We had continued, I have stopped, I told Mr. Sumner on the phone one day when he said he's going to be, and he was already on site. And I said, so you know, we, and he knew it, I said, we've been maintaining this because I can't let that sit there and look like that in the middle of our town. So we have been mowing it, as you all know, and, and sending those invoices to Mr. Lewis in California. Sometimes it takes a while, sometimes it doesn't, but since Mr. Sumner has come on the scene, scene, it seemed like he's woken up Mr. Lewis a little bit. And we got our check today because even, we're not mowing it anymore. I told Mr. Sumner I had no intentions of mowing it. So, and I just asked him, I said, are you going to hire a crew? And he said, we're going to be handled. So I don't know that they voted since then, I'm not going to let it go very long, is it that how? So we will be sending Mr. Lewis a notice in through, or temporary code enforcement officer to get that done. I'm not, I'm not going to not do that. I don't want, just because they buttoned it up, they're not going to let it, I'm not going to allow them to look back. And of course, the grass is dying now, but it's still, we're going to let it do so. That's what I know, Palmer?
Yeah, so if you'll remember, the court entered an order with a laundry list of, of stuff that we want done to bring that property in compliance with our code. About two weeks before, we had to serve him first of all with that order, which was a big in and of itself. We had to hire a private process server in Los Angeles to actually go out and find him. We finally found him on April fifteenth and he had a ninety day deadline to meet, it was been July fifteenth. And about two weeks before that, he hired another attorney and this guy that he's talking about. And another guy named Charles Lester called my office, kind of posing in the same tone as Mr. Sumner. So I'm not sure who it is that's, that's working with him. But anyway, I met with the mayor after the fifteenth deadline passed, got Danielle, got all the invoices. I sent a letter to his new attorney with all the invoices and said, hey, you know, we need to get these paid, we're going to have to put a lien on it. And we need the, the entire of this knocked out. And I realize we're just now getting the game, but here's what we need to do. I sent that letter on twenty fifth email back and said he could get back to me. I guess, I guess he got his client to pay the bills today. But they still have quite a few items that are not in compliance. They've secured the premises, so I don't think anybody can get in. But we know, I don't think the inside of the product code, I'm sure the roof still leaks. The pump house out on the, the street is a big concern because we've had cash drop facilities there before and we have one there. The pump house out on the, the street is a big concern because we've had cash dropped a little bit there before and we have one there and our business district is without water. So I highlighted that in the letter and said, you know, we need to, that's our next step. And he's supposed to be getting back. So at least there's a little progress.
A little tiny limmer of hope that this, this, Mr. Sumner would be, that would, that could be someone to convince Mr. Lewis to make this worthwhile. And even, and Mr. Sumner said to me, he said, whether, whether the building is removed or it's turned into something that's revenue producing for the city. I, I've been in, we've been in it. It's horrible. It's disgusting. It's in bad shape. Uh, so, but, and the last thing we want is to just get it buttoned up and then here we're right back to where we were. So we're gonna pursue it, um, any way we can.
Well, you mentioned the deadline that we were a week away from with the Mr. Lewis guy. I just wanna make sure we're not, his little handyman are coming in here and doing a little bit of dirty work and hooking the hoodwink in us and not going ahead and hitting this guy for not doing his job. Of cleaning it up or fixing it or whatever, or selling it. I know he didn't wanna sell it, didn't wanna rent it. He just wasn't sitting there. I just wanna make sure whenever the time is over, we, cause I don't know what, you know, we were, we were on the auction steps a couple of months ago at the courthouse.
And the judge.
Yeah, the judge explained that. So at some point, could it even used to happen again, or this guy needs to do something with it?
No, we totally agree.
I would suggest, Mayor, um, that at some point soon, we might get Sonny and our attorney. Uh, see if we can get them access to inspect the inside because there's a lot on the inside that's not compliant and could still pose a hell of a safety hazard if not fixed. Even though the button, the outside has been buttoned up. Um, there's some problems on the inside of that building that really need attention.
Well, yeah, I, I totally agree. And you know, somebody breaks in unknowing, puts the thing back, makes it look like it's still buttoned up and somebody's not checking on it. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we have that other group that was, has made an offer on it and he wouldn't entertain an offer on himself.
Yes, as far as his stance on all that, it doesn't seem like anything's changed. I, I don't know if Mr. Sumner is gonna be able to convince him of anything. But like you said, it was kind of at least something.
Well, at least he put liens in the place where he thought he was alive. That against the potential.
Yeah, Mr. Plumber and I have no, no thought at all of sitting back and twiddling our thumbs.
Cause he just keeps pushing it back and pushing it back.
I'll, I'll send another letter this week.
Well, I just don't want us to keep replacing, well, they've got it buttoned up and it looks like, you know, we'll give the guy a break. He's a little bit, we're gonna push it.
The thing is, the court ordered that these things would be fixed. I know they haven't been fixed because that house is still sitting out there. It hasn't been touched. So the pump house.
Right.
So my suspicion is that inside the building is probably something been touched. So, uh, but the court did work.
Well, it's only a matter of time before somebody breaks into it again. We've had the floor welded, we've had a lot of things and they, they get in.
We'll say on time. Yep, absolutely.
Uh, Mayor, I want to get an update on the, uh, the trail tunnel.
Yeah, so it's back in RDOT's hands, uh, in their corner. I guess we, we issued everything that, when Jason, we talked and I think I informed you guys last time, that, that what he was wanting was something back from us to say we're, we're in agreement with this. So what we're sending him was, Charlie was able to provide the minutes from said meeting and y'all's vote on it to move forward. So that's back to Jason with RDOT. Uh, they've got it and I've not heard from Jason, but according to him, he said, he said, I might need a resol-, we didn't actually do a resolution, if you remember. He said, that might be needed, but until I found out it is, we're gonna, we're gonna start. I, just for kicks, I drove with, over there today to see if they were breaking that, cutting that out and they're not. Look at one, they're kinda using that road to, to enter back over there. So I may call him this week.
It hadn't been a month yet. We just sent it on the line.
So it takes RDOT, you know, back and forth, back and forth to get.
He said he'd get back with us if one of you.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting to hear back from him.
Who's Jason?
Jason's with RDOT.
He's sort of district engineer.
District engineer.
He's the district engineer. He resides in this district.
Yes, yeah. He, his office is up at Chaffey Crossing.
He's out at Chaffey Crossing, okay.
He's the one that gave, remember the, the little note I read to you that Jason said, this is what this could cost? That was from him. And, and you guys did the resolution to, to prove that up to, to read something, whatever it was. Cause he said two fifty. And he was thankful that you allowed that extra, whatever it was. But he said, I don't think it'll cost that. But anyway, so we're waiting to hear back. It, it's in their corner. As far as Greenwood's concerned, we said, we want this. Let's do it. On that note, we're, we're changing our plans, changing the subject a little bit here, but we're changing our plans. We met, met with a young lady from school today. Can't remember her name.
Ms. Dixon.
Ms. Dixon, uh, who, who, she's kinda like, she took, built Mrs. Skaggs' place on, on planning the trail, the Trail of Trees. So we didn't wanna mess with any of the, I mean, whether they, they're not gonna have the tunnel ready for us by then for sure. And to ask them to make that accessible now, they did it for us last year because it was pretty flat. If we ask them to do it now, that'd be a lot of materials. So we're gonna move our Trail of Trees to Bell Park. Had Casey in the room and Sturgis chief in there, and we're gonna move that Trail of Trees up to Bell Park. We hope it's just one year because we want to get back on the trail when that tunnel's put in. So we're gonna go up there and utilize the promenade for Trail of Trees. And talked about the logistics, the parking, all that stuff. So that's the plan. Sorry. And yeah, so typically I have always been very stubborn about not moving Halloween because it's Halloween and you leave it alone and everybody knows what it is. But this year it's Friday night, home team, home football game in Greenwood, Arkansas. Not a good idea.
Same here.
Same here. So we're gonna do it, we're gonna celebrate it Thursday night. Cause that's when Mrs.
Dixon.
Dixon said she could get help from school. So we're gonna do it tonight early up at Bell Park.
Well, thank you for staying on that highway, Department of Labor.
On what? Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I think it's great. I don't think it's gonna be, I think it'll be another cool thing in Greenwood, Arkansas.
Thank you for staying on that, uh, little pull off.
Hey, by the way, I'm sorry. Were you gonna say something?
Turning line.
Mr. Purvis, uh, we, we are discussing the other night at the budget study session, we talked about everybody getting together and being on the same page of our renewal of our sales tax in twenty twenty-six. So, uh, we asked Mr. Bob to get that committee, the Economic Development Committee together and kind of get a plan. So we'll be coming back. Right. Do you have anything else for that?
We started paperwork today to get the committee structure formed so we can be illegal and then do that like we did the last several things. We'll go back together with our coordinator together, gathering facts and then we'll plan a campaign, raise some money.
I bet the department heads, well, I bet them several months ago, they've, some of them's already provided a little bit of information of what they've done, what they know in their tenure and then go back another, go back twenty years and tell me what has been done with that, that money for every park, street overlay, fire, everybody treating parks for sure. So we'll have that too.
So it's important to say what we've done, but it's important for us to say what we're going to do. And I know that you get feedback about the sunset. Now, while we can't ever do anything, you know, because it may require some long-term financing and all that. Well, the department heads, the commission, department head, whoever, which are, whatever it begs. If it's something that they're gonna need long-term financing, then it needs to be done early in the, in the election. And they need to, if that's the case, and I don't know if Parks is gone, no Parks is back here. Parks, that's something that, right after the budget's done, they need to get with Tom. And sit down with Tom, let Tom do accurate projections of what funding you would have. And I'm just saying, if, if y'all have a project that you're gonna need to borrow money, it needs to be done early in. Not when it, the, you know, about the time it's gonna sunset. So you need to realize that. Jeff needs to realize that. So if you're gonna do some financing, y'all gotta get with Tom and let Tom give you accurate projections of what's gonna happen. And especially if it was gonna need a, you know, a bond. That bond probably needs to be passed at the time of renewing it. So those are things you can't dump on Tom the last minute. And everything needs to be in front of the council in, we said, May. So you have ten months, nine months. Cause the, the ordinance needs to be in front of the council in May. So y'all can't dump all this on Tom in March and April. You need to be visiting with Tom by January. Tom, does that sound great?
Very decent. Matter of fact, the budget worksheets are being prepared now and that will be distributed for September. So every department will have the budget and work on starting September.
So is that what your projected, that you want to do to be at them? So we, wouldn't we go so long to do them?
They can be working on it now, but they'll get their official document by the end of this month.
So streets, parks, fire, that ordinance is gonna be in front of the council in May. Cause we got three months. We're not gonna go in there rushing. All your planning needs to be happening in January with the direction of Tom because he can give you accurate projections of what this is gonna produce in the next ten years. What you could realistically borrow if they're needing to borrow money to do something. And then tell the citizens, I'm going to do this and we gotta do it. But we're gonna do what we tell them we're gonna do. So just making sure y'all wake up one day and know it's gonna be spring and wake up one day and miss winter.
Are you, are you talking directly to Chief Ryan? I'm sorry.
I'm talking to all three of them.
Sorry, a little inside.
I just want planning, I just want planning to happen. So.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Powell, we're gonna start this process pretty immediately because we may come to you guys in January for an ordinance to go on a May ballot. That's a decision that'll have to be made, which election it needs to be acted. Cause there's, there's political considerations when you have a vote.
There are political considerations by being on a general ballot and then being in and off ballot.
And white party talk is kind of different because contested races are decided in the primary. Definitely, oh, that's gonna be part of the discussion. Anyway, it's a reason to move, expeditionally.
I just don't want to dump that stuff on Tom at the last minute and say, we're gonna need a bond to build ten miles of trail.
Then he told me he needs to leave the day and a half.
It's a day and a half.
We talk about this once ourselves, probably. This is not our first time. Probably every other month.
You get to product, or very educational department, I think, right? I know it's for, it's council forum, but I'll take an opportunity to, Frank is here. Mr. Frank, hokey. Is he on the phone? Mr. Frank, I'm acknowledging you being here tonight. I know. Well, come on up, whatever you need to do. This, if you've not met Frank, Frank delivers all the meals at the Senior Citizens Center. How old are you, sir, now? Eighteen-one. Okay. So I just wanna acknowledge you and, and you know, I appreciate you and what you do and you do it day in, day out.
I feel, I enjoy what I do on the corner.
I know, I know.
Going to work every day. Hey, we probably got our doctor in at, uh, your center or something.
Yes, sir.
Want to shake them all up yourself.
Yes, sir. You're not here for a commercial, but I appreciate you. I mean, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to put you on it. Frank, Davey slipped a little bit because he asked me for my autograph the other day. So there's that.
He's gonna tell me more something someday.
That's right. You know, I love, I appreciate you. Thank you for what you do every single day. And, and Frank gets to see and notices, so I know it's not us and I made that clear on, I did a little, recently did a little video to bring some folks up to date on what we're doing and I intend to plan on doing it more on different projects. And I mentioned that the funding has been cut to the center. Everybody in this room probably knows it's, it's federal. It's not, it's not the city of Greenwood. Uh, so they're, they're in a little bit of a bind as far as cutting hours. They've already had to cut some hours. They've had to, the tragic is that they've had to cut meals out. They no longer serve, and this is not just Greenwood, this is all around the region. Indiana's in charge of all these. So this is happening and they've, they've been cut on their funding side. So they, they're still open on Friday at the new center, but they're not serving a meal because they don't have the funds to do it. And I know Frank has been tasked with not getting to go to every single house that he used to deliver a meal. And I can't imagine what that feels like when you have to go and say, listen, there's only four meals this week instead of five or six. So, uh, if, if you don't mind, counsel, uh, reach out to your, your legislatures and remind them, I've done it. I know Sonny does it. So remind those folks of what's going on. It's federal. It's, I think it's both, but it's, I think it's federal more than anything. Uh, I, I know the governor recently gave some funds, who was that telling me something today? It was good news.
To the fair.
To the fair, to the fair, to all the fair grounds or local fairs, whatever, whatever that is. So if that could be also considered to, for providing food to these folks that don't have a hot meal. I know y'all are doing a frozen meal instead of all these hot meals to, to hold them over the weekend. And Deanna Rice, I can, I can testify because I was invited, the Levaca Mayor is the chair, is the chairman of the committee of SRCA. And I, I got invited to go sit in on a meeting. And Deanna, this is a couple of months ago when I first heard the, the cuts. And she was in tears of what she was having to do to notify clients, if you will, who's about to get these meals. So I have encouraged Lisa to be here and I expect, highly expect her to ask us and you guys to consider an increase on, on that. We've not, they've not asked the city of Greenwood, I don't, since you've been here, Tom,
Correct.
for an increase on what we provide. I know we got a new building and I know we're doing more things for them, but they've not asked for an increase in those,
Programs.
that program in, in a long time. So, and as you all know, the cost of food has gone up, uh, in, in six years or seven years since they've had. Anyway, that's not a commercial on that. Anything else from the council? I'm sorry I took your time. Second motion, second. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
What I have run down so far is.
What I have run down so far?